All right. Winn, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Perfect, yes. Awesome. Cool, it looks like everybody's here. Winn, I just wanted to give you a heads up. I do need to read.
Well, a call to order, the zoning board of appeals meeting for May 21st. The time is 5:01. Present this evening are, I'm going to apologize, I'm going to be jumping between two screens, but it looks like Ally is present. We also have Peter and Angela present. And David is also present. As well as myself, Winn Collins, the chair. City staff present today are Matt and Nancy. And we also have a technical facilitator present today, Stephen. This is our first Zoom meeting, so I guess I'll turn it over to Stephen to talk about the technical aspects.
Okay, welcome to our virtual zoning board of appeals meeting. We are going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the phone number in your original email. To members and city staff, if you're members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. The chair, clerk, and technical facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting. Committee members, please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted. Staff, please use the raise hand function when you are being asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'll also take now at this time a few minutes to explain the procedures that we're going to follow for a person to support or oppose an agenda item. Typically, this is where I remind people to silence their cell phones. That's probably only part of it, given that we're having a Zoom meeting. As much as you're able to avoid distractions and noise, or even muting when you're not speaking, please consider that. Also, we typically at this stage would have everyone register to speak in support of an agenda item and fill out the form, but we're going to be doing that virtually now today. We will follow an agenda when I announce each agenda item. Matt will give an introduction of the agenda item. When the project is called, I'll give an opportunity for the applicant to speak. I'll ask the applicant to state their name for the record, and they will have three minutes to describe the proposal. We ask that the applicant describe why a variance is necessary and what the applicant has done to minimize the amount of the variance that they are requesting. The board may ask questions, and then I will ask you to rejoin the audience. Those in the audience, the virtual audience here, in favor of the proposal, will be given an opportunity to speak, followed by those opposed. If there are any comments in opposition, we'll give people an opportunity to make a rebuttal statement. Public participants of an agenda item will, I'm sorry, public participation on the agenda item will then close, and the board will deliberate and vote. Members can, in the audience, can hear the discussion, but they're not allowed to comment. Approval requires a majority. There are five board members present, so a majority is three. I only vote if my vote will affect the outcome. If there are any questions after the board's action, the applicant or others can contact Matt Tucker at City Zoning. If anyone is bringing information or wants to show something on the screen that isn't original, we will need to make sure we have copies. Since this meeting's recorded, we'll have to decide at that time if that's sufficient or whether whatever is shown would have to be submitted. The first item of business, however, before we get to the applications, is approval of the minutes. And that would be approval of the minutes for the February 20th meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Or sorry, this might be actually, let's try a different method if we can, given that we're in a virtual space, and if multiple people speak at one time, that can be difficult for the system. So just bear with me for a moment. I guess what I'll do instead for approval of the minutes is ask if there's any objection.
Winn, it looks like Peter and Ally both have their hands raised.
Okay.
For moving, I'm assuming.
All right, Peter, your hand is raised?
Yes, I was going to move approval of the minutes as written.
All right, motion has been made. Is there a second? Ally, you're?
There is a correction on there. It's wrong.
Okay, let's take care of the procedural posture first.
Okay, seconded, yes.
Okay. What is the correction?
On page three, the last paragraph, it just says Dance County instead of Dane County.
Dance County sounds more fun.
It does.
If anyone else has any corrections, please use the hand, raised hand feature. Seeing none, let's take a stab at this again. A motion has been made to approve the minutes. I guess the... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ally's indicated with a raised hand. As has Peter, and as has Angela. Any opposed? There's no opposed, of course, since all four have voted aye, so that motion has been approved. The minutes for the previous meeting have been approved. The next item of business would be... Public comment. Now, I will clarify that public comment is not about an agenda item. It is general public comment. And I might need your help on this, Stephen, from a technical aspect. Are there any hands raised for public comment?
There are no registrants for public comment.
Okay, so then moving on, seeing no public comment, we'll move to disclosures and recusals. For the members of the board, if you have any disclosures or recusals, please raise your hand, and then we can take that up. David, is your hand raised?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to announce that I, for 20 years, lived on the 1200 block of East Mifflin, roughly one-half block from this development site. And there were two letters submitted. Ms. Christine Nor and Logu Ramazey, and another letter that we got by email from Zach Simmons. And I know, I know the folks that wrote those letters, but it would not affect my ability to participate.
All right. I don't see any other hands raised in the disclosures and recusals, so we'll now move on to the next agenda item, which is item 60443. Jim Vincent, representative of the owner of a property at 1154 East Mifflin Street, who requests a front and rear setback variance and a variance to allow a three-story structure to raise the existing structure to create a new basement level for an attached garage and entrance. This is an Alder District 2. Okay. I'll now turn it over to Matt.
Just going to give you a brief explanation of this. I'm also going to show you the pictures that we took of the site when we visited the site last month, because those were not sent out with you or to you. I'm going to use screen share to do this. Okay, this property, 1154 East Mifflin Street, is located in the east Ismus area. Mifflin Street runs parallel to Johnson Street, East Washington Avenue, generally in a northeast to southwest direction. This property is located near the intersection of Few Street and East Mifflin Street in the general Ismus area. Can you all see the application that I'm scrolling through? Okay, tuned to nodding heads. In this case, the petitioner is requesting a variance. What they would like to do is take the existing building and basically raise it up a level. The goal is to obtain a garage and some living space and a modified entrance, and to accomplish that, they would like to raise the structure up one level. The existing building sits into the required setback areas. On this map, you'll see the blue area is the required front yard setback area, and in this case, 17.68 feet is the required front setback. That is calculated using a setback averaging tool, so it's not a whole or round number. That's why it's sort of an unusual number, using the setbacks of the structures that are on that block face to calculate what the average setback can be, 17.68 feet. The proposal is 5.66 feet, and that is a 12.02-foot variance. The structure also currently sits in the rear setback, and it's also going to be shifted a little bit further into the rear setback, which I covered in the staff report. The proposal is what you see here. The green area, the rear yard setback requirement for this lot is 11 feet. The application proposes 3.33 feet, and that is a 7.67-foot variance. I'm going to stop sharing this screen now and show you photos that we took when we visited the area. Okay, can everyone see these pictures? All right. So the subject property is this white property. It is a, it's a two-story structure. What you're seeing in front here is there's a typical basement, a typical first-story level, and then a upper area that, towards the back, has a roof addition, which qualifies the upper area as a story. It is a level. So by raising the building up to add a level down at the bottom, the structure counts as having three stories. We'll look at that a little bit more. Going into the pictures. This photograph on the left was taken at the corner of Few Street and East Mifflin, looking to the southwest. The subject property in the foreground, the brown property, is, it's really a, kind of like a twin to the, to the white building. They're basically the same. This one, I do not believe, has that roof addition at the second level, however. This photo is taken from the middle of East Mifflin Street, showing the neighboring home and the home to the west or left. The detailed picture zooms in on the area, generally between the two homes. The proposal calls to shift this, the white home, the subject home, over a few inches also to comply with the 3.3-foot side yard setback. Currently, it sits a little bit in the setback area. This photograph is looking northeast, subject property in white. A few more photos, generally looking northeast, subject property in white. And this photo generally is looking northish, and with, in the foreground, the similar home that's built on the corner and the subject property that's white. And then a detail of the area between the two homes that are very similar, the corner home and the subject property. This photograph shows the existing condition with the existing structure's placement relative to, effectively in this case, the neighboring property, which is a home that has an address on Few Street. The brown to the left here is the corner lot. So this is, this shows the fire damage that is currently under repair. There was an existing balcony and stair, I believe, to grade that is being removed. And this building is shifting closer to the rear property line. The neighboring structure is actively under construction. And then to the background is the blue home, which is the home to the southwest. This photograph is taken on the property on Few Street, looking south. So the neighbor that is to the west is the blue home here. The subject property with this flashing is, this is the area where there's the proposal to construct the matching roof piece that's going to connect and match the other side. I don't have a good picture of that, because there just isn't a way to take that picture with the way the homes are placed. You'll have to look at the application where they show the renderings of the proposal to see generally the shape and what that looks like. And that completes the photos. So the request, once again, is for a front yard setback variance, a rear yard setback variance, and to allow a three-story structure in a district where the maximum number of stories that's allowed is two stories. Does anyone have any technical questions? I do not see any. So I think this is back to you, Winn, to call the applicant.
Sorry, I was muted. Let's try that again. Is the applicant or the representative present?
What's the applicant's name?
There are two applicants, Gene Blabham and James Vincent, Jim Vincent.
Okay, I'm going to unmute Gene and Jim.
Say something.
Hello?
Okay, Jim, you are unmuted, and Gene, you are also unmuted. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right. So typically, at this point, you'd have three minutes to speak. Is one of you planning to do the majority of the speaking? Are you looking to separate your time and each take three minutes, just so we don't have two people talking at once?
Do we each get three minutes?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay, well, this is Jim, I'm Jim Vincent. I designed the project. I would just say that we recognize the fact that this lot was challenging. We've done everything we can to work with planning, with Matt and zoning, to try to create a situation that would enable the property to work as a single-family residence with parking. One of the biggest issues for anybody living in that block is the people that live there, and you're a member who lives in that district, knows is that parking is a huge issue. It's something that we feel that we can actually market this property as a single-family residence if it has parking. So it's notable that we're, the first floor of this house is currently four feet above grade, more or less. And the actual raising of the building would be somewhere in the four-foot to four-foot six-inch range. So it's not like we're adding it, technically, we're adding a story, but we're actually increasing the bulk by, the vertical bulk by 4.6 inches or so, more or less. And the other considerations that we took into account here were the, being able to fix some of the defects, non-conforming stairways, door openings that are too small on the inside, things like this. And the other thing was, we had agreed and have a letter from Bill Sullivan at the Madison Fire Department, which I don't know if you can see my screen, but who is definitely supporting the idea that this building with a fire sprinkler system would be much safer than the building just restored as is. So, and the other thing is that the one dormer, what I call a dormer, that the administrator corrected me, because it's a continuation of the first-floor face, it is actually part of the second story, not a dormer. But that, that really, if, when we do go and, and sprinkler this house, it potentially would not need that second stairway, and potentially wouldn't need that roof up there if that was the case.
Thank you. I believe the three minutes have lapsed.
All right.
And we will ask questions, but I think we'll first have Gene speak, and then we can ask questions of both of you, if that process is acceptable to the two of you.
Jim, you've been muted just for the time being, and Gene, you're unmuted.
All right, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. What you're looking at is a proposal to try to bring this obsolete house into the 21st century and make it habitable for a family who has to drive a car to work and has a car and needs place to park one or two cars. I have several examples of things that are similar. Can you see me? No, we cannot. No, okay.
If you have documents that you want to share, can you please email them to Matt Tucker?
I can do that. I had a series of photos I wanted to show. One in particular, I took recently of a, like, one-year-old building on Williamson Street.
Why don't you take a moment to make sure you email them and then continue talking? We can stop your time, so it won't cut into your three minutes.
Okay, we'll email them. I don't know how to email photos. But there was a development completed in the, I think, 900 block of Williamson Street last year that, from the front of the, front of it, looks, has a balcony overhanging nearly to the sidewalk, and garage doors, and, and it's very similar in style to this, so that, to address people's concerns that it doesn't fit the neighborhood, well, there's a very similar-looking thing with a balcony overhanging it, just built last year on Williamson Street. No, I don't have a photo of that, that's on my phone, but this is another one.
They can't see it.
For the setback issues, I have many photos of other buildings around town. One in particular, in the 1300 block of East Mifflin Street, that has a garage under it, which is about five, six feet off the sidewalk. The old Riley House over on Lakeland Avenue has a garage, it's about three feet off the sidewalk. Those things are, of course, stylistically the same as the existing things in the neighborhood. But, other than that, what we're trying to do is accomplish a sale of a viable, useful single-family residence that should serve the neighborhood well for the next 50 years or more, as long as there are single-family homes on that block. One of the neighbors I talked to said, "No, don't bother, they're all going to be gone in a few years. The big developer's going to come in here and buy up everybody." I said, "I don't agree with that, that's difficult. When you've got a large commercial lot and you can buy from one owner, then you can do a development." But a dozen people on the block, or 15 or 20 owners, are unlikely to all agree to sell out at the same time. So I think the building needs to be upgraded and updated to make it sellable for the neighborhood, the benefit of the neighborhood. And other than that, that's my pitch, I guess. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
All right, thank you, Gene. You had noted that you had photographs, you had referenced them, but you said you didn't know how to email them?
No, my wife just sent one.
To Matt.
I have, I have received that photograph, and I could, I could share that.
Are there any others you want to email, Gene?
Well, are you interested in the one on Williamson Street that was just built last year that's kind of a similar thing with a balcony overhang on it?
Well, it's less about our interest and more about you. As the applicant, you have the opportunity to present whatever you'd like the board to consider, and the burden is on the applicant, so it's not a preference of the board, it's purely your choice.
I think my photos show that there's so many old examples of garages that are three to six feet off the sidewalk, that I was really quite surprised when, when I learned of the issue, that the angle of view thing, when, even in the last two years, these things have been allowed, and, and now we are facing having to move the property back, because apparently a different standard applies to a single project than to a PUD or to, or to just walking in and getting a permit without zoning approval. In other words, raising the building, they didn't have to do that, so they've got permits without, without going through this process.
All right, well, thank you, Gene. We did get the one photo that you've emailed, and Matt did share it on the screen. Was there any other photo you were looking to send? It looks like there's a second that came through.
This is the recently completed building on Williamson Street that has the similar overhanging balcony, that somebody expressed concern that it wouldn't look right with the neighborhood, but...
And the photo that you submitted, or the two photos, it looks like two different angles, what was the address of that property again, and how close is it in proximity to your project?
I think it's in the 900 block of Williamson Street, which is, what, three blocks north of East Washington Avenue, and 1154 East Mifflin is one block north of Williamson Street.
Yeah, I believe the property is...
Yeah, I believe the property is, I believe it's 739 Williamson. It's a three-story multifamily building that was recently rebuilt. It's right across from the Madison Candy Company, Eldorado Grill. Is that sound right, Gene?
Yeah, it is very close there.
739 Williamson Street.
Well, I may even have a photo of that.
You don't have the address.
No. This is, I think, 26, well, maybe that's the year that was done. Renaissance Property Group. Very new. But yes, it's in that general area.
All right. Well, thank you, Gene. Jim also can be unmuted at this time. If applicants, I'm sorry, if board members have any questions, we can use the raised-hand feature and then direct whether you're asking your question to Gene, Jim, or both. All right. It looks like we'll first go with Dave, and then second go with Peter.
I guess this could be a question for either Jim or Gene. It's not completely clear. If we, it looks like the house is just being lifted, to me, that the envelope is, the bulk, so to speak, is the same, except for the addition of this dormer. Is that a correct statement?
Jim, I think that's correct.
How many square feet addition is this?
The proposed dormer addition?
Correct. How much square feet does that add?
What do you think, Jim? Maybe?
It's about
60 to 40 square feet?
Seven by 10, maybe 70 square feet. Thereabouts.
And it appears to me that the dormer is filled with a stairwell. Is that correct?
That's correct. That stairway was the second exit from the third level, which is required.
So you are required to have that dormer in order to have a second egress or from the building?
We may be able to avoid that if we, by adding the sprinklers, which we've agreed to do.
So I guess that was my question. I mean, that's kind of a big deal. I mean, I myself have put in an indoor sprinkler system at great expense, and that's got to be a tough decision. But it would greatly affect what we're looking at here today if you were to remove that dormer, perhaps? Oh, and it's one aspect of what we're looking at.
Yeah, correct. It's, you know, it's the usefulness of it at this point is just the stairway. So if it's removed, you know, we don't give up any effective living space.
And it looks like you went from basically one bathroom to like maybe three and a half. But it looks like you were able to do that all within the building envelope. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No more questions.
Could I provide a clarification? Just to jump in, I have a correction and one point of information just for clarification. In the staff report on page six, I described that the building is moving. The building is being picked up and it is being shifted. It is being shifted to the rear, about 2.3 feet, and is being shifted to the north and east, towards Few Street, if you will, a few inches, probably about a half a foot or so, to comply with the 3.33-foot setback. Also, the existing shed roof exists, and even if the proposed roof was not approved, that roof that sits at a two-story would require variance to lift it up to a three-story still. Okay?
All right. We'll now turn it over to Peter for his question.
Following up on David's inquiry, the proposal that you have before us now does not include a sprinkler system.
We, in consulting with with the fire engineer, Bill Sullivan, we decided regardless of what we do here with this proposal, it will have a sprinkler system.
Okay, so you have committed yourselves to a sprinkler system, which is perhaps not relevant to our discussion, but you haven't committed as to whether or not that spiral stair will remain part of the proposal.
Well, I have to ask my client. Gene, what do you think? I mean, well...
I'm not trying to do this on the fly. I'm just simply asking, you know, we have documents from you before us, and that's what we're working from. And so I'm looking for clarification that the documents accurately reflect what your proposal is.
Well, my understanding is that the letter from Mr. Sullivan and that discussion happened quite recently, and that indeed if the building is moved and the sprinkler installed, as I think Jim mentioned a few minutes ago, then that third to second-floor spiral staircase is no longer necessary. And therefore, yeah, we could just take that out of the design. We wouldn't need that dormer addition on the other side. Well, I'm using the word dormer. Matt will call it a third-story appendage, whatever. But no, we should be able to take the spiral staircase out, and that would become unnecessary. We could leave that side of the roof as is.
Okay. My next question is, is there anything that precludes reconstructing the house in its current configuration without moving it or expanding it? Is there any reason you can't reconstruct it based on the fire damage?
Not to my knowledge. Jim, what do you think?
No. No.
Okay, so it could be reconstructed, and you wouldn't need a zoning variance to do that, if I understand the zoning code properly, that you would be able to reconstruct it and continue to use it as it has been. So you're proposing doing something different. And we always ask, you know, what are you doing to minimize the impact of the variance that you're requesting? And this will have impacts on adjacent properties, and I haven't heard anything to suggest what you're doing to minimize the impact on those properties.
Well, we did reposition the building to give the side lot on the one side legal status. And don't, you know, it's a bulk issue more than anything else. It's that four-and-a-half-feet that we're raising it up that is creating the issue here. It's considered a story now. It becomes three floors. So, you know, that's what's prompting the variances. And the issue with the safety of backing out of the garage with traffic engineering.
I have one quick comment on the three-story aspect. There are a couple other houses, just three or four lots down the street, that are called two-and-a-half or whatever. They're not recognized as full three stories because apparently some of that third-level living space is connected with the floor below it. But yet, those buildings are taller than what we are proposing. So their bulk is actually more than what we're proposing.
Thank you, Peter. It looks like Ally's next up, followed by Angela.
Okay. So is it true that the house behind this, was it being repaired because it was also damaged in the fire?
Correct.
And your proposal moves your home a little closer to that house?
It does.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
And next up, Angela.
Yes, just a question. Can you talk a little bit about the existing structure? Meaning, is it a single-family dwelling? Or is it a multi-unit building that is now being converted to a single-family unit?
No, it's a single-family home.
Okay. With similar layouts as in living spaces on the, I guess, the previous existing floor and bedrooms on the second story?
Are you asking that about the proposed?
No, the current.
I know, the existing building.
Yeah, the existing building is living dining room kitchen on first floor and three bedrooms and a bathroom on second floor.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Question for Matt. Matt, do you have kind of like an overlay of the new plan to the existing plan? Or is this the drawing here the one that we should be looking at?
The application did not include any elevations of the existing building that we can use to compare. I will tell you that we have received a photograph from an upcoming speaker that does show where the building is superimposed. And you'll be able to see that when that person speaks. They're going to be asking me to screen share that photo.
Okay, great. Great. That's all the question I have. Thank you.
All right. I see no more hands raised. I'll give the board members a moment if anyone has any further questions of the applicant. All right. Thank you to the two applicants. They may now be rejoining the virtual audience. Is there anyone wishing here to speak in favor of this agenda item?
There is one registrant here that is registered opposed.
All right. So then that will turn me to the next part. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And it sounds like there is one, so we'll have that applicant come forward. Or, I'm sorry, registrant.
Okay, this is Christine Noor. Christine, you should have a prompt on your screen to unmute yourself. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
You got me?
All right. And just to be clear, we'll do the same situation. You'll have three minutes, and then the board may ask questions.
Got it.
And Christine, if I could, just tell me when you want me to open the pictures and advance the pictures.
Okay. My name is Christine Noor, and I live in the blue house that was in the original photos that were seen right next door. That house is probably like eight, 10 feet from the side of my house. That fire could have very easily jumped to my house, and it was very scary. I'd have to say that I'm deeply opposed to this. It was purchased in the 1980s as a substandard lot, knowing that there was no parking. It seems that there's been no issue renting to multi-year renters through the years and good renters. And there's, you know, those people have stayed many years and apparently are happy living there without the parking. So I don't see why it's necessary that you would have to have parking to rent it or to sell it. Also, I think that houses without parking, just around the corner, there are many people that have purchased homes on Few Street, and they don't even have parking. So to argue that you need parking to sell it is not an argument. Just because it was a fire, it says that you can build it to what it was existing. All the hardship that, and the variances that are asked for are self-created here. I think if you restored it to what it was, there's no problem renting it or somebody buying it. It's such a small, odd lot, and it takes up most of the property. To move it back further to the house that was burned seems like a miscalculation. Also, by making a curb cut and giving parking just to that house, it's a hardship on the rest of the neighbors because it takes parking, public parking, away from other people. It designates it only to that one particular house. Right now, there's people circling around fighting for it. You know, if you had four renters in there, then there would still potentially be two cars in the parking lot and still two more cars looking. If you have a single-family home with two cars, then all that does is guarantee a spot for them, but it takes away from other people. So that is not a benefit to me or any neighbors. I don't think it looks and feels like many other buildings in the neighborhood. There is a house about three doors down that has a garage, but the setbacks on that house are, they're oddly like to the middle of that lot. So there's like a lot of space around there. I do not want these windows beaming right into, like, looking right into my bedroom windows. Like, when you lift the house, it's just going to all be looking right into our house. The only benefit that I can see from this would be a financial gain, either by getting more renters in there or a higher sale. And I think my time's up. Oh, and I didn't show my pictures.
Yeah, if the board would allow, I can share her pictures.
Sure. Let's do the pictures. And if your time is now up, Christine, the board may have questions, so we can start having board members raise their hand and use that feature. And this is as good a time as it needs to show the photos. There are likely some questions.
Okay, Christine, I'm just gonna have you explain what we're seeing here. And tell me when you would like to advance.
Okay. I'm just showing how little space there is between the sidewalks. I have kids that like scooter and bike. Tons of pedestrians come here to have cars backing in and out and add danger where there is none is very to me. You can advance. This just shows in between the houses from the back view, which you couldn't really see before, but, I mean, it's so close to our house. You can advance. And then again, this is just more views from angles that can't be seen unless you're in the backyard. You can see the new construction of the second burned house. It's so close, and to move it even closer is just crazy. You can advance. And I think some of these views are the same that you've shown before. You can advance. This is out the bedroom window, so then all of these windows would be raised up, you know, five feet or whatever they say, and they'd be looking right into my house. You can advance. This is the other similar, the house that has the garage that's like four houses down, but you can see it's set very far back off of the sidewalk. And that house in general, the style of it, is an anomaly, too. It's not a common house. You can advance. And I see typos. Again, just showing how close this odd area of Madison is. You can advance. This is the superimposed, what, I mean, it was roughly done, but, you know, you can see that it's not quite fitting in the style of what's going on in the neighborhood. You can advance. You can advance. And then my other concern is like the heavy pedestrians, it's on the bike path. It's right by a corner. To add people going in and out of a garage there is frightful. You can advance. Can you advance? Is there more? That's it, hello?
Matt, is there anything else?
Is there, is there one more picture or no? That might be it.
I wonder if we lost Matt.
Yeah, I think so. There was one more picture, um, but I mean, I think you get the idea.
All right, are there questions from the board? Our first question will come from Angela. Anyone else can certainly raise their hand if they have questions.
Oh, oops. That was an accident, I'm sorry. I, I do have a question, but it's for Matt and he's currently not present, so I'll wait.
All right. All right, Matt has rejoined us.
Sorry about that.
It looks like there might be one more photo to show on the screen share and Angela had a question for you. So, um, let's give Matt a moment to pull up the last photo and, uh, when he's ready, Angela, you can ask your question.
Okay.
Okay, there's a couple of photos here. Okay, okay, sorry about that, little power outage.
Are you able to share your screen, Matt?
I am, do, uh, can you see it? Were you able to see that?
No.
Okay, I will, let me share again. Sorry about that. Just to look at, did you wanna look at the last few pictures? Was that the, okay, just a sec, sorry about that. Must have lost that when it, uh, uh, disconnected. Uh, give me just one moment. This one, no, hold on. Okay, here we go. Okay. Is that visible? Okay, so just panning up here, uh, I'm gonna jump past a couple of the photos. Um, this was the one that was being shown when I got disconnected. And, uh, this is a photo, uh, showing some parking. No parking. And this is the, uh, last photo on that list, okay? And Angela, did you have a question?
Yes, um, just more of a clarification. So really the request is for variance for both the front yard, the rear yard, as well as the allowance to, from, uh, a conversion from a two to the three-story building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any questions for the applicant? I'm sorry, the, uh, registrant Christine Noor. Seeing no hands raised. We will now close the public hearing because we only had one registrant.
Um, when, if I could, um, we have some registrants that registered in support. Uh, we have some registrants that reg- registered in opposition, but they weren't interested in speaking. And I received a letter from the applicant that I would like to show and read quickly.
Thank you, yes.
It just came in. Okay, give me a second. Try this again. Okay, uh, this letter was just emailed to me by the applicant. Uh, it says, RE Jean Blabens, 1154 East Mifflin Street at his property, installing two-car garage beneath raised house. Clearance of four and a half to five feet. I think this would be, would not be an issue for the neighborhood. I have lived at 1141 East Mifflin for 12 years in a single-family house. Linda R. Larson, I support the construction. And then the list of registrants. Uh, these are a list of registr- registrants that have registered as opposed, but, uh, are, do not want to speak. And they include, uh, Eliza Rand at 1218 East Mifflin Street. Andrea Robertson at 1137 East Dayton Street. Andrea Mushar at 1147 East Mifflin Street. Tracy Tucker, 1146 East Mifflin Street. Tony Good, 1127 East Mifflin Street. Aubrey Sayah, 108 North Few Street. Jessica Becker, 1143 East Dayton Street. Mark Schelf, 1143 East Dayton Street. Peter Robertson, 1137 East Dayton Street. And finally, Casey Diatra, Diatria, 1150 East Mifflin Street. All those opposed, not wishing to speak.
I actually have a couple more who must have registered, uh, since you pulled that last report. Uh, okay, did you just want me to read them or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, John Beck, uh, opposed, 1150 East Mifflin Street. Uh, Kathleen Nisley opposed, uh, 109 North Few Street. Uh, Matt Eberly opposed, 109 North Few Street. Zach Simmons opposed, 103 North Few Street. And then, uh, Shannon Parks, 1110 East Mifflin Street opposed as well. That's, that should be it.
Thank you, and actually I'm, I'm glad we had this break because I realized I had neglected a critical part. Um, because there was, uh, someone who spoke in opposition and there are other registrants in opposition. We do give the applicant an opportunity to make rebuttal remarks and respond to any additional questions from the board. So at this time, I'd actually like to turn it back over to, uh, Jean and Jim.
Okay, Jean and Jim, uh, yep, you should have a prompt on your screen. Jim, it looks like you're successfully unmuted. Jean, uh, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
I got it.
Okay. Well, you're both unmuted, yep.
You know, I canvassed the neighborhood during a snowstorm and out of the, uh, seven or eight people that I talked to in the immediate vicinity, um, they were all supportive except for one, and that was Christine. So I, I'm surprised that, uh, someone generated a lot of the opposition and I wonder what the basis for is.
Well, I'm surprised as well, Jim, but, um, people who have, uh, once, a couple that were very strongly opposed that I talked to, uh, have their own parking and they enjoy that, uh, quite well, the parking just to pass the sidewalk in their front yards. Uh, but, uh, but apparently that was historically permissible. Parking thing is, uh, an issue that, uh, needs to be resolved in that neighborhood. I don't know if it means, uh, changing ordinances so that you have to have a resident permit to park, uh. What do people do? As Christine said, people run around the neighborhood, uh, chasing down parking spaces. Uh, it's like they almost have to wait in their car until somebody leaves and then jump on the spot immediately. Uh, as all these vertical buildings have, uh, been going up in the neighborhood, the only thing vertical that hasn't gone up is the chart, uh, of available parking spaces. It's, uh, a very, very bad thing for the neighborhood.
Now, it was interesting that, uh, some of the addresses weren't exactly in the immediate vicinity as well. I don't know.
What it is, I suppose people got, would of course get the information mailed to them, so they get a chance to take a look at it, read it. That's, that's how the democracy works. So, gotta respect that.
I guess. Well.
Um, yeah, I'm very, I'm shocked, but, uh, seems to be more, uh, more, more opposed than there were in support.
Well, thank you, Jim and Jean. Uh, are there any questions from the board? It looks like there are. We'll start with Peter. If anyone else has a question, uh, you can raise your hand at this time.
Uh, for the applicants, the question is, the previous speaker showed us some photos, including one that superimposed the, um, image of your proposal on the site. Uh, do you have any concerns regarding how that was represented?
Well, that's a good point. Thank you for remembering that, I do. Uh, it seems to me that the new, uh, proposal was superimposed in exactly the same location as the existing house, when, when indeed there would be four, an ex, an additional couple feet there that didn't show.
So it might move slightly towards the rear lot line, is that what you're sug- suggesting?
Exactly, it would go back, what, Jim, 2.4 feet, something like that.
Okay. Any other concerns with that representation?
Um, the other, the other representation of course is that, uh, she talked about the space between her building and our proposal, and our proposal would actually increase that space between.
I'm only asking about the photo that was, uh, presented.
Um, okay. I thought that showed that too, but it's fine. Do you have any comments on that?
You, you're, you're proposing to shift the building slightly to the right of the lot as we face it and which would, somewhat less than a foot move the building that direction, so.
Yes.
You're suggesting that, okay.
Yeah, that would increase the distance between the building and, and Christine's building. Not decrease it.
It's generally representative of the mass and scale of the building on that site and, and slightly off on exact placement on the lot is your statement.
Yeah, I agree, you agree, Jim?
Well, uh, if you look, you'll notice the existing, uh, uh, house shows up, the rear of the existing house shows up over, under the superimposition, uh, which indicates that, uh, uh, the photograph was skewed. Uh, and it would have to, have to have been skewed vertically for that to happen, so I, I do have an issue with it, but.
I did not notice that, thank you.
Okay, that's all I have.
Uh, Chair, I have, uh, one more item that, uh, was asked to be shared. There wasn't, uh, that, uh, was one more photograph when I got cut off from Christine Noor. Uh, and I'm going to screen share that now. And this is a, there's a letter in the application from Christine. And these are what she indicated were signatures of individuals who, um, who read the letter and, uh, I guess agreed with the letter, uh, in its form. And I will screen share it now. So to the top, you see the letter that is Christine's, uh, letter to the board. And, um, to the bottom are the names of a few people. Uh, I can read them, uh, Pat Kelly, 1210 East Mifflin Street. Robert, uh, someone at 919 East Dayton. Michael Anderson, 1151 East Mifflin. Michael N. Shell, 1151 East Mifflin. Uh, Linda Rut, looks like Rutledge, 1151 East Mifflin. And Carol Kitchlinger at 1151 East Mifflin. I'm gonna stop sharing now.
All right, thank you, Matt. Uh, since that additional information's been provided, I do wanna give Jim and Jean another opportunity if they have anything further to say as the applicants.
Well, the, the only thing that, uh, I would say is that if the criteria for approval, uh, is that elimination of that dormer, I think that, uh, we should ask for a, um, referral.
Thank you, Jim and Jean. There's also a question from David and also Angela. I'm sorry, I haven't figured out the feature to figure out who raised their hand first, so, uh, uh, just 'cause I said saw David first and said David first, let's go David then Angela.
It automatically sorts, so the top one.
I guess this might be more for Matt, but it's, um, it, this property is shifting so that, I mean, it's obviously a very tight lot and would be non-conforming. And it's shifting so that at least the side lot between both properties is being met. It's just the front and back then. So shifting it puts it into compliance um, on the side yards, in both, on both cases.
Uh, both side yards will be compliant. The existing side yard to the northeast is compliant and there's room to, to, to give there. And the shift is towards that direction, about six inches. So the side yard setbacks would be compliant, uh, for the structure.
All right, thank you, Angela, you're up. Uh, you're muted.
How about that? Talking to myself here. Um, so the question is for the applicants, considering the comments received, you know, registered from your neighbors in opposition surrounding the overall bulk of the new building and also the addition of, um, kind of like a garage being built, it's kind of a question that actually, um, Peter had raised earlier. Is that something that you would reconsider in the design? Meaning, is it an absolute must or is that something that you would consider in removing? And perhaps changing the design to replace it to a similar, um, building as the existing structure?
I'm not sure I understand the question exactly. Um, if you're thinking if we eliminated the garages, and then you've got pretty much the house as it is and, and as it sits. So maybe I need a little rephrasing on the question.
Okay, I'll try it, I'll try rephrasing. Have you considered, I guess, um, it was raised earlier in the meeting. Have you considered replacing or, um, perhaps rehabbing the structure based on what you have currently? Instead of the new design that you have submitted and presented before us?
Well, I think there would apparently be little choice. It's there, it, uh, it needs to be repaired or rebuilt. I don't think we can let that, uh, fire-damaged thing sit there indefinitely without, uh, without taking some, some action. I think the city will not be happy with that.
Correct, but it is also my understanding that if you were to rebuild based on the extr- existing foundation, um, or framework. or framework, you wouldn't need necessarily a variance from the zoning board. Is that right, Matt?
That's correct.
So that was really my question is basically rebuilding based on the framework, the existing framework that you have.
Okay, I guess that's, yeah, that's fairly obvious. If we, if we can't move it, we gotta repair it in place.
Okay.
As existing, yes. Yeah, it's no, no way to put a garage under it unless you raise it four and a half feet. And so we'll just have to repair it in place if, if you don't want to approve.
Let me just jump in here a little bit. And Jean, of course, I would like you to follow up with your, any thoughts you have on what I'm gonna say. I did tour the building with the building inspection director. Jean brought us into the building maybe a month and a half ago, a month ago or so. The damage is not so extensive that the structure will need to be rebuilt. This is basically a repair. The rear deck would need to be fully reconstructed. And there are some other features that need to be worked on. There were some load bearing walls that got cut by some previous construction at some point in time that are gonna need to be fixed. But this can basically be repaired. The shell is in fine shape. It's just a matter of doing basically a full-scale remodel, which is, is not unusual when you're looking at buildings of this age and when they have this level of fire damage.
Oh, I agree. You're right, it's a repair. The outside on the back looks to be pretty well charred, but as soon as you get inside, the structure is really not damaged very much at all, except for window frames and on the inside. And the exterior, of course, is the soffits, the faces, and the back, the siding on the back and a, and a few, few layers of shingles on the roof. That's what the contractor next door tells me from being, being up there on his ladders and looking it over. So yeah, basically, it's a repair.
All right, thank you, Jean. Thank you, Jim. If there's no further questions from the board? And if there's nothing further, Jean or Jim, that you want to provide at this time?
Jim did mention a referral. Is that something you're still planning on asking for, Jim?
Uh, short of denial, yeah.
Fair enough. It sounds like Jim used, had proposed the referral as an option with removing what you're calling a dormer. We certainly don't know yet if that would be the dispositive fact for the board members.
Well, yeah.
Oh, Jim, let me jump in here. There was one thing that you and I tossed about that I forgot until right now, and that was the, the option of adding a fire-rated wall to the backside of the building.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think the sprinklers pretty much take care of that though.
Then I guess I'll leave it to Jim for any further comment. Thank you all.
No, I, I, I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Then at this time, and we can have the board take up the, Jim's comment about a referral, but I also don't know yet if it's gonna be dispositive for the board on whether that would change anything. So I think with this time, I'll, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion from the board. It could be in this case approved, deny, or defer. And there is a hand raised by Peter. Is that a, are you making a motion?
Yes, I'm willing to make a motion. I don't think that the differential between the fire sprinkler and whether or not that spiral staircase is required is really going to affect my consideration of this. I think that's a minor aspect of the current proposal. So I'm willing to move ahead with a, a motion. If you feel that's appropriate.
That is fine. What is your motion?
My motion would be to approve the request for the front yard variance, the rear yard variance, and the variance for going from two stories to three stories that the applicant has proposed.
All right, a motion has been made. Is there a second? If so, raise your hand. And Ally has raised her hand, so it is seconded by Ally. Now we can discuss the standards. And just to refresh everyone's recollection, the first standard is there are conditions unique to the property of the applicant that does not apply generally to other properties in the district. We'll start with David and then Peter. David, you're muted.
Talking to myself. Okay, thank you. This standard is a little tough for me. I can maybe be convinced, but it, it doesn't strike me that we're meeting this standard. It sounds to me the driving factor is the requirement to add parking. Though, Matt, you can correct me, parking is not required. If they were to rebuild as-is, it would not have to somehow accommodate parking.
That's correct.
The twin house next door, I'm assuming does not have parking either. It's on the map we see. And if Christine's photo of all of the properties around here that don't have parking, I'm not sure I can, that this standard is being met. If parking is the driver. If that's the condition that there's just no parking. Or do we want to back into it another way?
All right, thank you, David. Peter, you're up.
I think the, a unique aspect of this particular property is, is shown on the, the front page of the application where Matt showed the areas of the setbacks or the required setbacks for the front and rear yards. And that leaves very little of the lot available for doing anything short of what the existing house is there right now. So I think we do see any number of proposals come forward where there are limitations on a site as to what can be built. But when the, the limitations to meet the existing setbacks is a small area, that's, you know, by looking at this, less than half the size of the current structure, I think that's a, a unique and extremely limiting factor.
Thank you. If there's nothing further with standard one, we will move on to standard two. The variance is not contrary to the spirit, purpose, and intent of the regulations in the zoning district and is not contrary to the public interest. We start with hands raised. Peter, you're up.
I'll speak again in an absence of others who wish to. I think the staff report covers this very well and extensively in, in covering the rear, front, and two-story applications. Clearly, the, the house is going to need some sort of variance if anything is done to change its current footprint. The limited adjustment they're making to the side yards does make it compliant there, but that's a very minor change in the scheme of things. I think the biggest change here is moving from two stories to three stories. And I don't, that one, I don't see that it meets the standards of, of the purpose of, of having that, which is the, the general compatibility between structures. And especially when they are this close together, I think that's quite problematic and certainly not necessarily in the public interest. While the front yard setback change doesn't, is greater, adding the, the garage and the drive access through there, I think is contradictory to the general public interest there with a very short setback. You, you can't get a car out of the garage without being on the sidewalk. It makes it a, a difficult situation there.
Thank you, Peter. Is there anyone else on standard two? Seeing no raised hands, we'll move to standard three. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would unreasonably prevent use of the property for a permitted purpose or would render compliance with the ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. Ally. You're muted.
How about that? Here we go. Okay. Gosh, I almost, I think I forgot what I was gonna say here, but wait, wait, give me a second. It seems to me that, okay. So the applicant could rebuild a house of pretty nice size as, or repair the house that, that's existing there. But it is clear that to do anything different would require a variance. So I, I guess I, I would say that it's not unnecessarily burdensome to have to rebuild the house with its current footprint, in my opinion.
Thank you, Ally. Peter?
I'll just reiterate what Ally said and note that the applicant indicated that it's possible to reconstruct the existing structure as-is and they would have a functional space just like they have now. So clearly, there, there is a use for this structure without a variance. The desire seems simply to be able to add parking to it in a, in a neighborhood where there isn't a lot of parking and many structures don't have parking. But that doesn't seem to be a overwhelming burden, in my opinion.
Anyone else for standard three? If not, and seeing none, we will move to standard four. The alleged difficulty or hardship is created by the terms of the ordinance rather than a, by a person who has a present interest in the property. If someone would like to speak to that, I see Peter has raised his hand.
Since I haven't been unmuted, I'll keep talking. Again, I'd refer to the staff report on this one, but I, I think in, similar to what both Ally and I suggested under the previous standard, that there, there is a, a way to use this and that the difficulty is really coming from the fact that they want to change the existing structure and, and add the parking, or the garage portion of that.
And also Angela?
At what Peter had already indicated in that the applicants also acknowledged the, the changing or the addition of the fire sprinkling system in the building. And in such case, then the second rear stairways from, between two, the two stories would not be necessary and therefore the rear extension may not be necessarily.
Thank you. We'll move to the next standard, standard five. The proposed variance shall not create a substantial detriment to adjacent property. Ally. Are you muted?
Okay. This one, it seems to me that this, the proposal does create detriment to adjacent properties. It puts a lot of bulk really next door to the property. Which one is that? 1152? It's gonna add a lot of bulk there. I'm also just really concerned about moving it closer to a house that was also burned in the, the fire that happened here. That, that just strikes me as unwise and, and certainly very detrimental. And not just in the case of a fire at 1154, which might not happen with a sprinkler system or it might be suppressed, but, but similarly, there could be a fire at 106 North View. So detriment seems to go both ways there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on standard five? Seeing no raised hands, we'll move to standard six. Standard six is the proposed variance shall be compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood. And David? You're muted, David.
I mentioned earlier, I lived on a half a block from here for 20 years, seven years ago. And what's interesting is there are many examples of these twin houses. And it strikes me when I look at the change in the elevation, how the twin gets raised up. And really, I think it really affects the, the character of that street face. Because you have these obviously two twin homes and all of a sudden one's been raised up above where the, the lines no longer match up. You know, the design is just out of whack. And I'm also, I've been in the neighborhood for a long time. I, I know that there are very few houses where a garage is a, a kind of a prominent street face. I think that would, I think that affects the character here of this neighborhood. In addition to the twin, I think that having these, this large garage door at almost street level, it looks to me like, is, is not in character with that neighborhood.
Peter? Did your hand raise?
Yes, I, I think the proposal, to my mind, is not in character with the neighborhood. And I think one of the documents submitted by the applicant, sheet C-1, illustrates that fact, where they show elevations of the other properties along. along that side of the block, as well as where they're positioned on the lot. And the, the other buildings that are as tall or slightly taller than what the proposal is are set back considerably from the property line and the sidewalk as opposed to this structure. It, a very significant difference there. And the, the scale and mass of the number of other properties on that side of the block are much smaller. And I believe the opposite side of the block is similar. So I, I don't see that it's in character there. The applicant suggested that there may be several other buildings around of a similar style with a first level garage and living space on two stories above. The one specific one that was noted is on the 700 block of Williamson Street where, which is quite different in context where across the street there are larger buildings, what was the old warehouse and there's now apartments and the Madison Candy Company, which, building which has restaurants and coffee shops and offices in it. And even on the same side of the block, there are taller structures on that side as well. But those are residential in nature. So I don't think that's a reasonable comparison to suggest that because a, a house of, of this type was located somewhere else in a totally different context is, is comparable. I don't see that, that this is in, proposal is in character with the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you, Peter. We'll now turn to Ally.
I will say, I, I actually went by the house yesterday. And, you know, that neighborhood is really changing quite a lot and it's modernizing quite a bit. And, you know, while I would say maybe that the proposal is not necessarily in character with the immediate, that block of that East Mifflin or, or, you know, the adjacent structures. I, I actually, I think the character of that neighborhood is changing to higher buildings, more, more modern looking. And so on this standard, I'm actually kind of comfortable with this proposal.
Thank you, Ally. I don't see any other hands raised at this time, so we will continue. There has been a motion made to approve, and that has been seconded. We have discussed each of the standards. And just to let the board know that we can't take the typical, all those in favor say aye and all those opposed say nay because of the mechanism of Zoom. It picks up the loudest person and may not pick up everyone. So what I will do is a roll call vote. And I'll just go with seniority based upon, so we'll go Peter, Ally, Angela, and David. Starting with you, Peter.
Now that I'm unmuted, I will vote no on this motion.
Ally?
I vote no.
Angela?
I vote no.
David?
I vote no.
The motion has failed based upon a finding that the standards were not met by a four to zero vote. And so with that, it concludes the public hearing portion of the meeting. The final agenda item is communications and announcements. Are there any?
Yes, just briefly, at this point in time, we have not received any other applications for variance or appeal. So we don't know when we're going to get any. I will expect that any future meetings will be canceled and we'll be scheduling meetings, special meetings. We're going to try and stay to the schedule if we can when items come up, and we will be in touch with you going forward. I think you can expect that this will be our format, at least until the city starts having meetings in this format that it may have had in the past.
All right. Thank you, Matt. If there is nothing further, we are adjourned. The time being 6:35.